Here we go. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Steve DeYoung. I'm the chairman of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll now convene at January 27 meeting of the zoning board. As required by General R Chapter 30A Sections 18 to 25 and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, the public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel 18 or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. You may request to participate by using the raising of the hand function. Wow. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, oh, sorry, Karen. Went down the ladder a bit. So this is, as we say, the regular meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. This is January 27. We have four matters on our agenda. We're going to just shake up the agenda list just a bit. Petition 4930. Aitch, Saviti? Is that correct? Savitsi?
Shavichi.
And Scott Schumaker? Am I saying that Savitsi right? Property location at 50 Park Avenue, West Yarmouth, Mass. That property is in an R25 zoning district. Our applicant seeks a special permit under zoning bylaws 104.3.2, subparagraph 2, to raise and replace an existing single-family dwelling in the required setbacks and with the 100 feet of a bog per 203.5 foot note U. Would you please identify yourselves, whoever is presenting this evening?
Sure. Good evening. I imagine I can take this off to... My name is Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and I do represent the petitioners. Scott Schumark, I think, is joining us by Zoom only. And also seated at the table with me is Karen Healy from the BSC Group. As you indicated, we...
You've worked with those mics once or twice, haven't you?
Yeah, not recently, I guess.
They give you a little feedback, as you know.
And as you indicated, we are seeking a special permit under 10432 to allow the petitioners to raise and replace the single-family home that's located at the property. This property is in the R25 zoning district. It only improved with a one and one-half-story, single-family structure, having four bedrooms and two baths, constructed in approximately 1910. The property also has a detached garage, which is being retained. The property contains approximately 16,553 square feet, and a portion of that is within 100 feet of an overgrown bog. A portion of the lot in the existing structure is also in the flood zone 11 and X. The dwelling is situated currently 11.3 feet from the front boundary, but is approximately 19 feet from the edge of the pavement of Park Avenue. The property complies with both side yard setbacks, and the height of the existing structure is approximately 23 feet from the average grade at street, which is 6.5 feet, and lot coverage is at 14.2%. Some of you may remember this project coming close to a hearing before this board. We had applied back in, I believe it was June, to basically lift this house, not to raise it, R-A-Z-E, but to raise it physically above the ground to get it out of the flood zone, and at the same time, we were to add another story to the property and leave it in its present location. We had some concerns about its proximity to Park Avenue, and so we went back to the drawing board and thought we could move this house back possibly to full compliance with the bylaw, and therefore, we wouldn't need any relief at all. Problem, as you can see, on the plan is we do have a lot of wetlands to deal with here from different places. So we weren't able to get it completely in compliance with the zoning bylaw, which is the purpose of the special permit tonight. So, and they also decided it was time to get a new home here. So the proposal is to remove this one, build this new, single-family home. It's going to be two stories with a habitable attic. And as always, with these types of cases, and in this part of town, apparently, we always have that balancing act between zoning, conservation, wetlands issues, and so we always have to have a little give and take between the boards. Conservation Commission has approved this plan that you had before you, and that was... They issued an order of conditions on November 22. The order also includes a 600-square-foot mitigation planting requirement, as shown on the plan. You can see it in the back part of this property. The new structure is going to comply with the side and the rear setbacks. The front setback is going to improve from its current 11.3 feet. We're going to move it back 26.8 feet to the front porch, and then increase to the proposed height of 34.1 after the 30-foot line on the house. So the portion of the home that will go up the highest will be within... will not be in the setbacks. And if you've also been by the property, you know that this lot is raised up above Park Avenue. There's a little berm there, maybe a few feet, which gives a little bit of more protection from, you know, the roadway and also, you know, noise and those types of things. So that's also a good thing. The basement is going to be flood compliant, equipped with flood, 12 flood vents, and only used for storage, no mechanicals either. The lot coverage will actually decrease from, what did we say, 14.2 down to 13.8%. A new Title V septic system was also going to be installed on the project. So under 104.3.2.2, this board can issue a special permit if it determines that this raise and replacement will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than is the existing non-conforming structure. I believe the new structure and the design are going to be beneficial to the neighborhood. The use is not going to change from a single-family dwelling. The design, obviously, is very attractive. You saw from the plans, and I think it's also fitting with the changing neighborhood. This is probably, I don't know, maybe my fifth or sixth in this neighborhood in the last two, three years. You see a lot of this happening, and I think it's time for a lot of these tired houses to be refreshed and improved. It's not going to cause any or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion. We are getting it out of the flood zone, which is always a good thing. If waves start to thrash, a new Title V septic system is always a good thing, especially when you have sensitive areas such as this regarding wetlands and bogs and the like. So for those reasons, we hope that a special permit is warranted here. If you have any questions, we hope we can answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Karen, you going to add anything?
No, just here for any questions you might have about the flood zones or the septic system or those specific technical details.
Mr. Neets, any questions about petitions?
No, I think Mr. Tardif covered it well, and to have the approval of the Conservation Commission makes our job a little bit easier, too. So, thank you.
How about you, Mr. Agar? Any question about petitions?
No comment. I do think Attorney Tardif did cover everything. No questions, excuse me. I do have a comment. I remember the last time that you presented, we were concerned about how close that was going to be to the street. You were able to move it back. We had some discussions about that. I know you weren't sure relative to the Conservation Commission, but that looks like it's worked itself out. And although they don't meet the 30 feet, they're certainly decreasing the existing nonconformity substantially, and I don't really think that they could get it back any further than that. So I do agree with Attorney Tardif that it's a natural evolution in this neighborhood. There's a lot of people that are building new houses or remodeling their existing houses. So I will save the rest of my comments for later on, but that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freypr?
No, it's nice that it's going to be moved back from the street because it is fairly close. That's obviously a good thing. And I did notice there was a condition that conservation, you'll adhere to the condition in the conservation assessment. I think they...
Believe so.
You have no choices.
Yeah. We have to.
Just checking. And then, could you just... What is the current height of the house at the tallest? I know it's going to be 34 feet when you finish.
Yeah, it's approximately 23 feet from grade currently.
23.
But again, we are getting another story in there, so.
Yeah. And the square footage, you said, is, was 16, and what's it going to?
It's going to about 28.
Those are my only questions. Thank you.
So I have the question of, apparently, Mr. Freypr reads plans better than I do, perhaps, but where is the elevation noted on the plans? Can you tell me which sheet that's on? Because I looked for it, and I can't see it. The elevations?
The elevation, yeah.
Maybe I've missed it.
If you look at the top of ridge, it's 34.
Sheet A4. I hear A3. A3 doesn't have it because A3 just tells us where the floors are going to be. So if it's on A4, I apologize if I missed it. It is 34 overall. Okay, all right. I appreciate that because, you know, that's always the issue, making sure that we're keeping it at the right height. But the presentation hit it right on the money, as far as I'm concerned, because there is a reality, and that's that each property within the flood zones are going to have to make accommodations to the way they're structured or restructured or improved upon. It's probably pretty good with the way we have the debate over global warming, and maybe Beachfront will be somewhere around Route 28 pretty soon, who knows? But in any event, I think the design is fabulous. I think it's very much in keeping with what we're watching, be redesigned, I think, to protect and preserve this property. It's very good. That bog has been a dry bog for eons, so. Okay, does anybody... Oh, I'm sorry, there is one thing I have to read into the record, and that's the conservation... Kelly Grant, Conservation Administrator, by memo, said the following concerning this. At its 11-18-21 meeting, the Conservation Commission reviewed a notice of intent for the above property for the raise and replacement of a single-family dwelling within the buffer zone of a bordering vegetated wetland and within land subject to coastal storm flowage. The commission voted to approve the proposed work with conditions per Plan of Land 50 Park Ave and West Yarmouth. Karen Healy, PLS BSC Group dated 11-3-21, including the condition that a 600-square-foot buffer of native vegetation be planted per the approved plan. The applicant must wait two growing seasons before requesting a certificate of compliance. You know, I think that's probably, we ought to start doing that whenever we make landscape a component, because we've seen some that, after the first year, not worth the ground they're on, right?
The plants die.
Okay, so does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, come to the microphone. Let's see what you have to say. Seeing none. Does anybody care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the mic. Seeing none. We now close to the public input. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have anybody at home that has their hand raised? For those of you who don't watch our meetings every single week, shame on you, but also, we did this by Zoom for what, about a year, over a year, I think? And it was a fine process, but it's much nicer to be sitting here and seeing everybody live. So with nobody in our audience, either at home or here, caring to add anything in, we now close it to public discussion on the merits of the petition, open up the board discussion. Mr. Freypr, your thoughts?
I'm glad to see it be pushed back from the road a little bit further. I think that's a really good sign, and it's a nice design. It meets all the criteria, so I think it's a very nice, nice solution.
Okay. And Mr. Agar, do you have any thoughts on the petition?
I agree with everything Jay just said. You know, I think they meet the criteria of the bylaw. I think it's a very tastefully designed home. I think it's going to fit very well into the neighborhood. Again, the nonconformity at the front, which I think was the most concerning with the board, as it always is, they've done a great job by putting the house back, and I think it's going to be great there. So I plan on supporting it, and I urge the board to support it as well.
How about you there, Mr. Neets? What are your thoughts?
I think it's very attractive, and I think it certainly fits into the neighborhood and the efforts that the petitioner went through to make it significantly larger from 1,600 feet to 2,800 square feet, I think is not going to have a tremendous impact on that neighborhood. I know members of this board in the past were not so much in favor of having increased square footage and size, particularly for pre-existing nonconformity. So I think they've done as much as they can, and I think with property values as they are in that neighborhood, it can certainly sustain it, and it's nice to have the additional taxable base for the community.
We all agree on that. Listen, how far back was it again? 26, what? 26... Well, to the porch is 26...
I hit 28.
26.8. And into the frame? 28, is it? I heard 28.
The frame is 34.2.
Oh, 30, okay. All right, so you guys did a great job.
And getting conservation approval, I think, is the key, and to be flood plain compliant. You know, it's great for the petitioner to get their property compliant.
I think the three of us here are absolutely always against anything that doesn't put it to the complete frontage distance, but I don't know how you could do it here and then also take care of concomitant issues. Good job, well done. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented. I don't have any conditions.
Motion made by Mr. Freypr, seconded by Mr. Neets to approve the petition as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye, I think we have to do it individually.
When you've got a full vote... That's fine, let's do a roll call. Mr. Neets?
Aye.
Mr. Agar?
Aye.
Mr. Freypr?
Aye.
And Mr. DeYoung, aye. That's a 4-0 vote. In favor. And so, that is granted. I look forward to seeing a draft decision, which I'm sure will be on my email by midnight tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is Dick Barton on Zoom? Is Dick... No?
No, he couldn't make it.
I came to be the fifth, and then he didn't show up.
Good thing you're here, we wouldn't have cornered. So now we're going to go back to the right order, and that's 4929. Kelly A. and George K. Norwood, concerning property loc... Boy, they're down in Naples. I wish I was there right now. Wow. Concerning property located 185 Seaview Ave, South Yarmouth, Mass. That property is in an R25 zoning district, and our applicant this evening seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2 and our variance under 203.5, to raise and replace an existing single-family dwelling in the required setbacks. Good evening, and would you tell everybody at home who you are, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Karen Healy. I'm a land surveyor with the BSC Group, representing Mr. and Mrs. Norwood today. This project is similar to the previous project in that it is a house within the flood zone that has to be elevated a substantial amount to become flood zone compliant. If the lot itself is 50 feet wide and has frontage on Seaview Avenue, and there is a way that, a 10-foot-wide way that runs around the rear and the subtlety side of the property. The way is overgrown and unused, but it does exist. It's what we would call a paper street to, but it does exist, and it carries the required setbacks associated with that. Current lot coverage is 1,008 square feet, which is 16.8%, and the proposed lot coverage is 1,420, which is 24.7%, which meets the requirements of the town at 25%.
Could you repeat what the square footage is now?
Existing lot coverage is 1,008, 1,008, which works out to be 16.8%.
Okay.
And proposed is 1,430 at 24.7%. We meet the street setback of 30.5 feet. We are improving the setback on the north side, going from 8.3 to 8.5, a minimal amount, but the lot is 50 feet wide, so there's not a whole lot we can pick up on either side. The biggest thing right here is that currently it is in the flood zone with the current first floor elevation at 7.2, and we are raising the proposed first floor to 1,300 to comply with the flood zone requirements. That's the minimum allowed by current code. The building height will be 31.3 above Seaview Avenue. It is basically a one-and-a-half slash two-story building and with flood elevation of six feet to the top of foundation from the existing grade. This also has been in front of the Conservation Commission, and it also has been approved by the Conservation Commission. The existing septic system that's on site is a current Title V septic system, so there is no intent to replace or remove that. If we were to replace it, it would be, go back in exactly the same location at the same elevation it is today. So it is currently compliant. We are adding some drainage on both sides of the property, north and south, and adding a slot drain on the street to catch any potential runoff that might go down from the driveway because of the elevated ground. On that, I would be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions of Mr. DeYoung?
They're going to... They're removing the current side deck, is that correct?
Yes, yes, which is...
The south side, I guess it is.
I'm sorry?
The south side deck is going to be removed?
The south side deck is going to be removed, and that is 4.9 feet from the property line. We're increasing that side then to 14 feet.
And it's going from, what, a three-bedroom, one-bath to three-two? Is that correct?
Not sure. I know the number of bedrooms is staying the same. I do have the plan if you need the bathrooms, but...
21 feet high.
Yes, it will be a two-bedroom, two-bathroom.
Did you say that the square footage right now is 1,008 square feet?
The lot coverage is 1,008.
The square footage right now is, what, 719, I think I saw on the planes or something or somewhere?
Correct, because the current lot coverage would include both the shed and the decks that are there, so the...
Do you know what the square footage is after... After 142?
I don't have the square footage amount, but it would be about double of what's existing
So approximately 1,400 or so?
I thought you said 1430 before.
That was the lot coverage. Building area would include the second floor. Lot coverage doesn't include floors, includes decks and sheds and...
And that was 24% approximately, is that what you said?
The lot coverage was 24.7%.
What is the lot size, do you know?
Lot size, right on the plan, it is 5,996 square feet.
That's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Agar?
Yes, can you tell me what the elevation is at the street? I don't see it listed anywhere.
It is 6.4.
Do you have that anywhere on a plan?
I don't have it written on the plan, but the concrete found across the street, I know there's a few tents above, and that's at 6.87. I also have the...
Oh, I see that. I see it over here. Okay, so your top of foundation is going to be 12, so you're going to be six feet in the air?
Yes, if you look at the architectural plans as well, it shows that basically what we're doing is putting it on pilings, piers, that section, and...
And do you have any type of an elevation that shows what you're putting it on? Is that going to be on a foundation?
A portion will be on the foundation, and a portion will be on a pier.
All right, I'm just talking about the house itself, the front of the house. What's the front of the house going to be supported by?
That will be on the foundation.
Okay, so you're going to have six feet of exposure?
Well, it would be six feet elevated, but we're putting basically a skirt around it to hide that concrete face.
What are you going to... That was going to be my question. What are you going to use for materials to cover that?
Wood.
Is that horizontal wood?
Yes, the way this is designed, it's, yes.
Is it white? Is it white with just a little space in between? I've noticed that's become very popular, that to cover the foundation.
It's very popular when you want the air to blow through. In this particular case, with the foundation being a solid wall, it would be a solid skirt. You wouldn't be able to see into the concrete behind it.
No, 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 I'm just, it's just a look. It almost looks like a ship lap, but it's...
If there's a tongue and groove, you would see where the groove sits into each one.
It's going to be like a tongue and groove, horizontal, like a 1 by 12?
That's what this...
Picture of it? Can I just take a quick look at it? Oh, I see, you're going verticals. You're not going horizontal, you're going verticals. Okay. Do you know the material that's made out of? Is that an Azic or something like that? Or is it going to be wood?
I don't think they've discussed that yet. I mean, it could be Azic.
Well, we're going to put a condition on that? That's okay?
Okay.
I don't know if we need to put a condition on the material, but just as long as we have an understanding what it is, because I do have a concern about that, because that house is going to be sticking up in the air if there's nothing that's covering it.
We definitely have discussed the fact that the concrete will be covered, because we have no problem at all with that condition, that it would be covered with some material.
White material? Color white?
We can... I'm sure my client would have an issue with the color white.
I don't mean to be, you know, the fashion police, but I just, you know, that's going to stick out from what's there right now. Okay, it's going to be up in the air.
I fully understand, yes. I mean, this, because the flood zone goes north of here, probably another, you know, 1,000 feet, any home that comes in to use this board in the next multiple years is going to have exactly the same issue. So yes, I fully understand it's going to be elevated that much.
Is that going to be white cedar shingles on the siding?
I don't get into the details of the... I just don't know. It is a modular home.
It's a modular home? That's all I have for now, but I would just suggest that as a condition, I would want that concrete, but if your representation is that they're going to do it anyway, we'll just put it as a condition, so I presume that it won't be objected to by the petitioner.
I don't believe he's going to want the house to look nice, and four feet of concrete exposed does not look nice.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Yeah, did you want to look at it?
No, that's all right. I've looked at the plans before. It is a modular or prefab construction, so there's not a lot of architectural changes that could be made, and we can't make too many changes for the elevations and the flood plain conformance.
No.
Because that's already approved by the Conservation Commission. I do have some concern for the neighbors, and I think one of the neighbors did express, John Sears owns the property to the south, I guess, and was concerned about the size of the structure. I think he's probably going to be more concerned about the height of the structure, because it's going to be significantly higher, but we have no control over that because of the mandates of the flood plain, and that's something that's changing neighborhoods in every part of the area, south of 28, near the ocean, so.
Nick, actually, on that, I'm noticing here, you've got a ridge height of 37 feet?
Correct. Now, that's above the... That's above sea level. That's not 37 feet above the ground. The street elevation...
What is your height of ridge above street level?
31.3, the height that's underneath, underneath where it says ridge. You've got height underneath of that.
Okay.
And that's height above street level.
And that's 31?
Yes.
Didn't say 31.3?
And almost, sorry, almost seven feet of that is because of the foundation having to be elevated to be flood zone compliant. foundation having to be elevated to be flood zone compliant.
So the house itself would be seven feet below that in terms of taking a look at it. Okay. Thanks, Ken. Thank you, Mr. Kim. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm used to being.
Mr. Neets?
Yes.
Any questions of our petitioner?
I'm all set. Thank you.
So. Again, I, I, I see a proposed dwelling on a plan of land by BSC Group dated. I'm sorry, I just can't, twenty twenty-one, I don't see the date. But in any event, within that square box of the house, there is a reference to ridge thirty-seven point three-three and height thirty-one point three. What does that mean for me to me, please, sir?
The height is based on the street elevation. So the height of three one point three is above the street elevation of six, which is where we're basing the top five-foot maximum building height on. Because this project has to be on a datum because of flood zone, we have to show what the, the zero elevation is so that we can establish what the flood zone elevation is. So the three seven point three-three is the distance above sea level.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is, as you know, there was there was some correspondence on this, and so I just want to address that in terms of a plan that's sitting in front of me that could be interpreted to mean that the house height is thirty-seven feet, and that actually isn't true.
Correct, that is actually, that's why we put height three one point three to try and identify. And I have to show both numbers. And this was the best way I could see to, to do it.
And this is a prefabricated house?
Yes.
How, how do they ship this in, in modules?
Yeah, a project like this would come in for literally four boxes and be set with a crane, and it literally would be installed in a day. And then the roofing and everything else would be put together.
Well, I'm familiar with the construction because a good friend of mine just built one over in the Bayside, and it's just magnificent, the final project. I remember when these modular houses were questionable, you know? They, they were always out of whack somehow. But boy, the finished project on this, on this one, I'm thinking, it was just breathtaking. It's gorgeous. So they're doing nice things with this. It looks like a very nice house. It's a very busy lot. What do you say? You want this back?
If you need one for the. I have copies, so if you need some for the record.
Just have some of your writings on here, that's.
My squibble, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just to, just to confirm again, it, the existing structure is a three-bedroom dwelling?
Yes.
And this is proposed to be a three-bedroom dwelling with different floor plans, but a second floor, a usable second floor in this, where the existing house has just a single floor.
Chairman, the homeowner is on Zoom. I'm not sure if you want to let her in at some point.
Well, okay, if the homeowner, you, you, you're speaking about the petitioner?
Yes.
Okay, if the petitioner would like to speak, I guess we can invite him in. Go ahead, sir. Identify yourself for us, please, and tell us what you'd like to say. There's Kelly Norwood, I guess, is coming on, by the looks of it. Whenever Kelly's ready, we're waiting to hear you.
No, it's, I think the last name is Norwood.
Norwood, isn't that what I just said?
I thought you said Kelly. What did I say? He said. First name is Kelly, the last name is Norwood, and George.
Yeah. Did I say Norwood Kelly?
You've got it on mute? No, it isn't.
Now, we're waiting on you. Go right ahead and tell us what you'd like to say.
I think you're, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Sure can, yeah.
Good. I appreciate you taking a look at this for us. I just wanted to let you know that we are using Azac Board, and it is white. Those were concerns that we discussed in designing it, and it's a panel home that comes in on panels. And they construct it, you know, that way on the site.
Okay, was there anything else you wanted to add, or is?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make sure you had all the, and the, the, the square footage is quite a bit smaller for livable, but.
Oh, John Moynihan?
Yeah, they didn't mention, they only mentioned John Sears.
Yeah.
Then it meant.
Did you, did you see the letter from, did you see the letter from John Moynihan supporting, John and Ann Moynihan supporting our?
We, we, sir, we're gonna get to that, but.
Okay.
You can have just one of you talking at a time. That'd be very helpful. So we, everywhere you have to say.
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So there are some matters that we do need to read into the record. One is that of Kelly Grant, Conservation Administrator, who with respect to this petition, four nine two nine, says as follows. At its ten twenty-one twenty-one meeting, the Conservation Commission reviewed the request for determination of applicability for the above property for the raise and replacement of a single-family dwelling within land subject coastal storage flowage. The commission voted to approve the proposed work per Plan of Land one eighty-five Seaview Avenue in South Yarmouth, Karen Healy, PLS, PSC Group, and the plan date of ten eighteen twenty-one. All right, there are, as referenced, there's some letters. I'm gonna start with the one that was referenced already, that is by John Sears, and I suspect everybody knows John Sears, knows, knows John Sears, but perhaps not. Dear members, I direct, I am a direct butter at one eighty-seven Seaview Avenue, and I've owned my property for forty-nine years. I am in Florida for the month of January. So I am unable to attend the hearing. Also, I'm a full-time resident of Yarmouth. I point out that there is a fifteen-foot right-of-way between our properties, which is unbuildable and unowned by either of us. The sideline distance to any building must be from the edge of this right-of-way. Secondly, I respectfully request that any building should conform in size to the neighboring homes as these lots have only fifty-foot frontages. Third, the septic system should support any increase in bedrooms. That's between you and the Board of Health, okay? The last one there. The next letter is that of Ann and John Moynihan. It's dated January fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. My name is John Moynihan, and my wife, Ann Moynihan, Moynihan, and I own property at one seventy-nine Seaview Avenue. I am writing to you to express our support for the petition that you will be reviewing on this evening, that our neighbors Kelly and George Norwood of one eighty-five Seaview have submitted for a special permit slash variance to raise and replace their home. The Norwoods have been great neighbors and have constantly upgraded their property and consequently enhanced the value of the surrounding properties of neighborhood. They have discussed and reviewed their plans with us and other neighbors. We feel that this plan will be a significant improvement to their property as well as providing a great enhancement to the neighborhood. Please approve their petition and let me know if there is any additional feedback that you that you find useful to, in your consideration. Well, we can't do that. We can only take what we get tonight, but, you know, Mr. Sears' letter does bring to my attention. Can you tell me where, if you know, the fifteen, fifteen-foot right-of-way is?
It's, it's actually a ten-foot right-of-way, based on like our plans.
Yeah.
And we, we showed that just to the side of the building. Current deck is four point nine feet from that way, and our proposed house will be fourteen, so we're basically increasing the setback to that way by nine feet. The existing house and the proposed house are pretty much the same width at twenty-eight feet. You can see the underlying hatched area of the existing house. So we're not making the house any wider, and we're removing the subterranean deck to try and squeeze everything in to make it more compliant.
How far will it be further into the lot, further from the lot line?
Nine, nine feet.
So we'll be at nine point oh feet from that sideline?
No, we're increasing it by nine feet. It will be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fourteen point oh feet from the sideline.
Okay, thank you. We'll be right to the, with the public in just a minute. Is, is that just an ancient hay road, or is that what it is?
It was a road that was created during, when the subdivision was created. I believe it gives, gave rights to people all the way up to access down around here. But it is completely overgrown as far as nobody uses it, to the best of my knowledge. It isn't, you know, you can see my tree line that goes right through it on the backside there. So if somebody used it, they'd be literally walking through the trees. It's.
Yeah, you know, a lot of those old paper roads that we see are exactly that, the old hay roads when they go down and cut the the grass down by the dunes, you know? All right, does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Let's hear what you have to say. Seeing none. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Let us hear what you have to say. Seeing none. We now close it to the public's input on the petition. And we open it up. Oh, is there anybody at home?
There's one person with their raised, hand raised.
I'm sorry?
There is one person. I think he's.
Their hand's raised? Okay, by all means, let's invite them in. Here we go. It's Carolyn Fox's. I, I don't have my glasses on, but Carolyn Fox, am I right on that? Hello, Carolyn, what do you have to say to us? On the, your microphone. If you're speaking, you need to.
Okay, you had me muted. Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, we're at one eighty-one Seaview Avenue, and we just have concerns with construction during tourist season. We do run our facility out, so our cottage out, and that would really kind of just, you know, kind of make the whole area kind of a mess if it's at any time during the season. I don't know how quickly this will be done, but we do have concerns about that part of it.
Well, I can't speak to that. I have lived next to construction myself before, and it's certainly not fun when it's going on, and it's affecting your use of your property, but I can't speak to when it's going to happen. That's gonna be whenever the town issues a permit and the parties are ready to move forward, so. Is there anything else?
No, just that we really prefer it not to be during the summertime, but I, you know, I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, unfortunately, our void can't really condition. So I, I, I hear you. I.
Don't believe there's any, any regulation or ordinance in the town that prevents it. Some neighborhoods that are, you know, privately owned with a neighborhood association do restrict development during certain months of the year, but as a general rule, it's, it's not restricted.
Yeah, I, and you know, we, we've had the same request made to us previously on other petitions that we've been asked to review, and honestly, it's just nothing we can do. I, I feel your pain.
Okay, well, I thought I should voice that opinion.
Hopefully, you're in a nice swamp place, and that's why you're seeing us via Zoom, but in any event.
No, we're, we're actually in Ohio.
I guess that. Go Cincinnati, huh?
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. So that, is there anybody else? So that closes it to the public input in the petition, and we'll go out of order a little bit here. Mr. Igo, what are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, you know, they've got a very small lot, but they've done a wonderful job, I think, designing the house. You know, they're designing it deeper versus wider. They are decreasing a nonconformity, at least on one side. I think the house is gonna look pretty good when it's sitting in there. We saw that plan. It looks very nice. We heard from the petitioner, and they intend to really do a good job building it. I did have some concerns about covering the foundation, but it's been represented that that's gonna take place, and I, I think they're gonna be a good new neighbor to the area. I am familiar with the former owners of this house. I've been in this house actually many times. Many years ago, the former owners were very good friends of my family, so spent many years playing in this yard, so. But again.
Did you jog through it?
I haven't jogged.
Is, is there a plaque on the site?
No, there is, and, and how that's relevant to this discussion, I don't know, but.
This man has been on every square inch of the town of Yarmouth. I'm just so impressed.
But I guess my point is, is you know, in as far as what you can do with the lot, they've done a great job, and I think it's gonna look very, very nice on the site, and I do think they meet the criteria of the bylaw in terms of the raise and replace section. So I plan on supporting it, and I would urge the rest of the board to do so as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Neets?
I, I, I think I basically agree with, with Sean's view. You know, there is going to be some pain for the change and for the elevation. But I think, you know, as we've witnessed and been involved with that so many other times in other neighborhoods, on particularly on the south side of twenty-eight, it's kind of a fact of life that as properties are improved, they easily reach the threshold where it's more affordable for them to raise and replace than it is to, to be compliant with the flood zone, and this would make the property compliant. It's been approved by the Conservation Commission. There's no additional septic usage because they're both three-bedroom houses. And we're getting a little bit better sidelines on one side, and I think it makes good common sense for the future to upgrade these properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frapery, do you have thoughts you'd like to share with us?
I think I agree with everything said so far. It's certainly an improvement over the current setbacks on the side yards. It's a small lot. There's only so much you can do. So given that, given that fact, and you know, my, it, it does seem to be a house that's gonna stand out in the neighborhood now compared to some of the other houses, so it is a change, but at the same time, it's within all the guidelines and bylaws, so. So I'm, I'm kind of with everyone as far as supporting it.
Well, I, you know, I certainly understand Mr. Sears' concerns. Regrettably, it's in a flood zone, so, you know, these things have to be accommodated today. And if it were increasing in size substantially or increasing in bedroom numbers, clearly the septic system wouldn't support it, but if that were what was being asked, I don't think I could support it, but the manner it's presented, I certainly can. So is somebody prepared to make a motion, please? Would like credit?
I'll make a motion to support it as presented.
Thank you for taking us off the hook. Is there a second?
I think history would prove that Mr. Mr. Igo should make the second. He has such an intimate knowledge of the property.
That's true. I'll second that.
I thought maybe that right-of-way was for you to go jogging.
We're gonna check with the Historical Society.
You know, I never knew that right-of-way. There's obviously that goes.
He's gonna be over there now. Jogging through the. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna do a roll call vote since I guess we have people at home that would like to know everybody's vote. Mr. Neets?
I would vote aye.
And Mr. Igo?
Aye.
And Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
And Mr. DeYoung says aye. That's four point oh. Four to, four to oh, it passes therefore as a special permit. However, it was asked for relief in the alternative. So what's your position on the variance?
I would like to withdraw the request for variance on this property.
Without prejudice? So moved.
Second.
We don't need any discussion on that, do we? If anybody's interested in having discussion on the, on the motion that's before us, please say so now. Not hearing anybody. All those in favor of the motion to allow the withdrawal of the variance request without prejudice, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that carries unanimously four oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Thank you, sir.
It started quick.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
When you're done, Shub. When you're done shoveling your walk tomorrow, would you come over to my house and shovel mine? All right, petition four nine three one, that of Mary Ann Fells, fifty-seven General Lawrence Road in South Yarmouth, Mass. The property is in our forty zoning district and this evening our applicant seeks a special permit. Under zoning bylaw one oh four point three point two and or for use variant. Oh, and or for use under two oh two point five eight one, or in the alternative of variance per two oh three point five to permit a currently constructed accessory garage within the front yard setback. Hello?
Hello.
Would you identify yourself for the people at home, please?
Sure, my name is Paul Tardif, I'm an attorney in Yarmouthport and I represent the petitioner. Seated with me is Dan Ojala from Down Cape Engineering. And I know Mary Ann Fells is also either on Zoom or in the building, but. There they are. Mr. Chairman, the property at fifty-seven General Lawrence is a corner lot. It's in the R forty zoning district, contains fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one square feet of area with sixty-nine feet of frontage on General Lawrence Road and one hundred and fifteen feet of frontage on Captain Bacon Road. The existing house is located fifteen point four feet from the side boundary where twenty feet is required, but meets all the other bulk requirements of the bylaw. There's also a newly constructed garage on the north portion of the property, which is located twenty-eight point eight feet from Captain Bacon Road where thirty feet is required. The applicant recently contracted for the construction of a new thirty foot by thirty-five foot garage. The intention was to build a garage on the slab, which would meet all the existing setbacks and other bulk requirements. An application for a building permit was submitted in April of two thousand twenty-one, which included a plan depicting the proposed location of the garage to be thirty point five feet from Captain Bacon Road and estimating the construction cost to be in excess of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The building department issued building permit B L D dash two one dash zero zero six seven eight two in July of two thousand twenty-one and construction commenced. I did provide you with the relevant documents, the pertinent documents for the billing permit application and the the permit itself, as well as the plan that was prepared. I believe it's Down Cape Engineering did that as well. At least two inspections occurred at the site conducted by the representatives of the building department. One for the rebar that was to be put in place before they poured the concrete. And then one for the for the port foundation in August of two thousand twenty-one. The garage was then constructed and when the applicant sought a final inspection, an as-built plan was then required by the building department. And that's when the error was discovered that the garage had been built sixteen inches into the Captain Bacon front setback. The petitioner was notified by the engineer who had done the built, the ad-built, as-built, which was Down Cape Engineering. And after the foundation hole was dug, we learned that no call from anyone on site was made to the engineer to stake out the corners, which is not required, but prudent. And so therefore, two by fours went up and a garage was constructed. And as you know, the relief tonight is sought is for a special permit or in the alternative of variance to allow the now constructed garage to remain in place. Now, I've submitted a memorandum which explains the reasons why I think this board can make a section six finding or a special permit to allow for the change, alteration or extension of a single and two-family residential structure. In addition, I know that it's been the practice of this board to issue special permits for the construction of detached accessory dwellings, such as you did in decision forty nine oh three. If you remember, in that application, the applicant was constructing a fourteen foot by twenty-eight foot detached garage, which would encroach ten feet into a side setback. And that was on a lot which was smaller than the lot we have today. That special permit was granted. And I'm not sure if you had the time to review the memorandum and the cases that I submitted also. But if you allow me, I'll just make a quick summary of that. The biggest reason why I think a special permit is allowed in this case is because of the language of Mass General Law's chapter forty A, section six. And this has been a point of contention for a lot of different courts over the years. Cases like this find their way up either into the Superior Land Court and stall or end there. Some go to the appeals court. We rarely have the Supreme Judicial Court making any type of pronouncement on this issue because they're not really interested.
Nobody wants to spend the money.
Nobody wants to spend money. Well, we finally have a case from the Supreme Judicial Court and that case is the Bilalta case, which you have. It's pretty interesting. It basically reinforces what we had already learned from some of the other cases that we have, like the Gale case, which went to the appeals court. And basically what it says is that any increase or expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming standard will allow an applicant to get a, what they call a section six finding, which is the language that we have for a special permit, not not more detrimental to the neighborhood. You know that language. And any any bylaw out there that has a an additional condition that says, well, if you're going to increase that, you need a variance. The court struck that down and said, no more. That what you're doing is, you know, you're halting the the creation of good housing, which was a policy consideration that the Supreme Judicial Court had in this case. They were very, very clear about it, took an entire section to talk about that. So in this case, we do have a pre-existing nonconforming lot. We have a pre-existing nonconforming structure that sits in a setback, which is this, the house itself is almost, what, five, four, four foot? Six into a setback. And so what we have now is an additional encroachment into that front setback, but not as much, sixteen inches, not four feet. But and so what we're doing is asking this board to look at that and say, is this sixteen inch encroachment substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is already there? And I would submit that it's not. I think that sixteen inches is, you know, in the scheme of things, not significant whatsoever. I think you also look at not only the distance from the road layout, which is the twenty-eight point eight, but you also have additional space between the road layout edge and the pavement itself, which brings it well past thirty feet. And so if you look at that case, I think that we finally have some sort of pronouncement that for things that we already knew, which is an expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming structure can be extended as long as it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. There are some cases that talk about what is not even to be considered substantially more detrimental. Small additions, court had, there's a, there's a case Bjorkland that talks about specific things that you don't even need relief. You get them by right. So I think a special permit is warranted in this case. If not, then we move to the variance criteria. And I believe that this board has not only the power to grant a variance, but I think you have the grounds in this case to do so. As you know, we need to create, we need to establish three criteria for this board in order to vote on a variance. One, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or the appellant. I think we can all agree in this case is probably a a clear case of that. Petitioner has a two-car garage, which cannot be moved as it sits on a slab with rebar. The front sixteen inches of the structure cannot realistically be removed to come into full compliance. Song sixteen inches off the front of this building probably is not going to happen. The search, the situation is certainly not self-created as the petitioner's contractor poured the foundation in the incorrect location, creating the encroachment. I think we can all agree this was just an honest mistake. I don't think it was any intention to basically steal sixteen inches off this side, this front setback, and I think they were going to get away with it. This is as close to a diminut- de minimis encroachment as they get. The final cost of construction, by the way, although predicted to be one hundred and forty thousand dollars, was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars that she has already spent. I think the hardship is owing to the circumstances relating to the soil conditions, the shape, the topography of the land. You do have a slope there from the street going up approximately five feet to where that front of that building of the garage was constructed. I think there may have been some issues with the fact that the stakes had been placed. And then because you had to dig down, maybe some of those stakes got lodged out. And I, you know, I think some of that has to do with the topography. We also had a septic system to deal with in the back there. If you look at the plan, the back of that garage is pretty close to the septic system where it was supposed to go. And I think that maybe the excavator got a little nervous about where they were digging and pushed a little bit. And that may have been one of the reasons we have what we have today. And three, the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. Again, the encroachment is only sixteen inches in the front setback. The front setback is measured from the sideline to the road layout. And as I indicated, there's approximately six feet of area between the road layout and where the pavement begins. I don't think there's any detriment to the public good. Allowing this relief would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Accessory structures such as this are allowed by right, which is exactly how she got her building permit. She got all of the plans done, she went and filed and a billing permit was issued. So I think that those criteria are met. So here we are. We have a fully permitted and constructed accessory structure, which through no fault of the applicant was positioned in the wrong spot without any seeming intention to get away with it. In fact, it was the applicant who put the billing department on notice of the issue. We don't have a situation where I, and I've seen many people come before this board either in probably three situations. One is, I'm not pulling a billing permit, I'm just going to do what I want and gets caught and has to come back here. Number two, you have the innocent party who does not pull a billing permit for something that they need a permit for, but not knowingly, not trying to do anything wrong. And then you have this situation, which is a person who knew to pull a billing permit and did everything right and got the permit and even had two inspections done before they realized under the rules of the billing department that this property couldn't support that garage where it was located after it was already built. So we don't have someone saying, I would, I'd rather ask for forgiveness than permission. We've heard that phrase before. We have, in my opinion, a situation which would allow this board to make either a section six finding or a variance, both of which this board has done in the past cases based on more concerning facts than these. We've discussed often, this board is a board of relief, the board of last resort, if you will. The equities here say to grant the relief to this applicant. Ms. Fells and I do not mean to lay this at your feet, but relief is necessary. Realistic alternatives are not existent. And the reasonable resolution is to issue either a special permit or a variance in this case. So we would ask for that vote tonight. If you have questions, we'll try to answer it. I think I've answered, I've given you the facts that I have, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Neets, any questions of Mr.? Are you not speaking tonight?
I'll say anything that is needed of me, but just, I just, Dan Ojala from Down Cape. I would say just to reiterate what Paul said, that it's, it appears in every way that I've looked at, it's just an honest mistake. There was COVID, the forms guy was busy, the digger was busy. They forgot to call to have it restaked and it just got nudged over. You can see it just twisted a little bit and here we are, you know, and it's just unfortunate that everything was framed up and it is what it is. And but in all appearances, appears to be an honest mistake from law-abiding citizens. So I can explain anything else if in detail if needed.
I always enjoy your arguments, that's why I ask. Mr. Neets?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is a very big garage and I was listening very carefully to Mr. Tardif's presentation. And at one point you said an accessory dwelling. You meant accessory building, I believe, or structure.
That is not a dwelling.
What is the, what is the second floor going to be utilized?
And I specifically asked my client about this. So her husband, first of all, there weren't going to be any windows at all. And the builder said, I think it's going to look better if you put some windows in here and get some natural light.
It is big.
He is a, works on classic cars. So that was the main reason why he wanted a basically a workshop for his cars. I think if you look, I don't know if you, if the doors were open today, but he does have a couple of cars already with tarps over them. And that's what he likes to do, he's tinkering with cars. He's also worked for the railroad for twenty-seven years and he collects model trains. And it was his.
You're going to tell us he was going to pull a locomotive?
No, no.
You could move it back from the street a little bit.
Give it a good push. It's a dream to build a huge model train room up above there and also storage parts for his, the vehicles down below. There's not to be any living space. I asked him specifically and I said it was going to be a question tonight. He has no problem with the condition that that be the case. He's looking for a slop sink on the first floor, basically to wash his hands as before he goes in the house. You know, and so in his power to get his tools running, but there's no intention of ever turning that into an apartment, living space, cooking facilities, anything like that, so.
Are the doors in place now? The garage?
The garage doors are in place.
Okay, because they were both up when I went by today. Could we ask who the contractor was?
You can. Well, I'm a little reluctant to.
Might want to build something.
Do that, but.
Should be on the building permit probably.
Yeah. I'll get it for you.
Scott Mitchell.
Scott Mitchell. And I did talk to him today, by the way, and asked him what happened. And again, he is really baffled as anyone.
That's all right, we understand.
He doesn't understand what happened either.
The stakes happened, I understand that. It is, as I said when I started, it is a bigger than normal two-car garage. And it does really stick out going down that street. And I go riding by today, seeing it in existence. It's it's hard to imagine that somebody didn't see that they didn't line up with the front of that house or the side of that, of their own house or the house on the other corner behind it or the sideline. Because it it really is pretty obvious.
Yeah.
Probably more obvious now that the building is up rather than when the just the slab was installed.
Right, and again, you know, and we've seen this on many projects. I'm sure there's going to be landscaping done that's going to soften it all. And it's what we always say, right? But it really does, you know, over time, as things start to grow in, I think you're going to have, you know, an attractive accessory structure. And again, I don't think anyone noticed the sixteen inches by by sight. I think it was just pure happenstance and I think no one is really that affected by the fact that it is sixteen inches there. I think it was going to be there by right. Would it have been softened by sixteen inches back?
Probably not.
Well, I'm going to call it slightly, but to what degree, I don't think I would have been able to notice it. But yeah, it's tough.
We should, it seems to be an epidemic in that neighborhood. We had another one a few months ago up on Captain Bacon, I think, where he was adding an additional two-car garage for his restoration work on on classic cars too, so.
And that was going to four, four bays.
That was going to four bays, right. And we squelched his additional storage of other vehicles on the property too, so. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, I remember that, that seemed like a pretty impressive garage for that, the plan for that neighborhood. But this one's a pretty big too, but let's move on. Mr. Igo?
I don't have any questions, I do have a comment and I heard the.
I do have a comment and I heard the, I heard the legal presentation. I don't believe this qualifies for a special permit. I do believe it qualifies for a variance. And I do believe that honest mistakes are made. And I think this is a glaring example of one. I don't think there was any intention to do anything but the right thing here. And I do think they qualify for a variance. I think the criteria was laid out very well by counsel. And so when it comes to time for a vote, I plan on voting for this petition. And I would urge the board to support it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Frapri?
Yeah, I have to agree with Mr. Igo. I think it leans more towards a variance also, especially the fact that, I mean, I know the quotes, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't go through that. But it does talk about housing and this is, this is an accessory building. So I'm not sure exactly that it would, would be a special permit. But, so I would agree with you on the, on the variance side. It, it's a big garage, height-wise inside as well, and it's raised up in the air. So I had two concerns. One was to make sure that the upper, we put a condition that the, the top floor would not be used as a living space. And then the second one would be some plantings on the side. It's also the lots raised up and something to at least buffer the visual as you're coming down the street to do something. I can't say that I would build one this big, but it's there and I think it's not the one and a half feet I wouldn't, it's an honest mistake. So I think I would support it too if we could get those conditions.
Thank you.
So I, I think it, because I saw it and it really struck me, I'm just going to read something from Maria Balada versus zoning Board of Appeals in Brooklyn case, a Brookline, rather. I'm just going to short, shorten it to a DCA report, which is a federal report, I mean a state report concerning community affairs and proposed changes to additions under the zoning enabling act. And, and they write in this decision, the report also recognized however that, quote, "On the other hand, there is increasing awareness that the assumption it is desirable to eliminate non-conforming users may not always be valid." I don't know that that necessarily pertains to this, but I think it's a quote out of that decision that I think we might want to consider going forward. I think you meet both criterias, unlike my, my brethren, but I have no problem proceeding with it as a, as a variance. But first we're going to ask, is there anybody in our audience that cares to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, is there anybody that cares to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, we close it to the public. Is there anybody at home that would like to speak regarding this petition? And so with respect to the public input, we now close.
Somebody just raised their hand.
What?
Someone just raised their hand.
Oh, okay. Please, whoever it is, we invite them in.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mimi Bernardo and I live at 93 Captain Bacon Road. May I speak?
Sure.
Okay.
Hi. I, I don't really know where to begin with this. I mean, I guess first and foremost, it's all been said, it's a very large garage. And I'm not surprised to hear that it's not built far back enough. But I just want to say that I've talked to a lot of our neighbors, we're a close-knit neighborhood, and a lot of people are very unhappy about the size of this garage. It is not within keeping of other homes or garage sizes. And I guess I just wanted to say that it's frustrating because we usually like all of our neighbors. And I'm shocked that, I mean, I'm guessing that they went through all the proper building permits and I'm guessing that the size of the garage was looked at and approved. But I guess I'm just upset that our neighbors didn't take the rest of us into consideration, especially the poor people who live directly across the street from that garage. Their house sits down. So when they look out the front of their house, that is all they see. And, and one more thing I wanted to add. We did not get any a butter notification before this was approved. I don't know if it had to go in front of like the zoning board of appeals or anything like that because it's so big.
Oh, you should send in the butters notice of this hearing. Did you get that?
Absolutely not.
Not for the hearing? How did they know this on?
Nope. We did not get one and the neighbors we've spoken to did not either.
Well, there's a pretty extensive butters list here. I can't speak to that. They're here tonight, so. Yeah, so let's, so you're welcome to say anything you'd like to say. I'm glad you somehow found out about it.
Yep, my husband would like to add something if that's okay.
I know, of course, sure.
Good evening, thank you for just-
Sir, identify yourself, please.
Good evening, my name is Jason Bernardo, may I speak?
All right, go ahead and tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I would just like to add that we did not receive any notification from the town. However, when I was on a jog prior to the construction of this, I was approached by a woman that lives at that residence. We had recently done some work to our home and none of the neighbors had any issues with it. I don't know what prompted her to stop me and wave me down from my run, but, but I'm fine with it. I'm, I'm a very approachable person. I try to keep an eye on the neighbors around us. In any event, not to be long-winded, this woman said that she would like to have a very humble, that's her word, humble garage constructed for two classic cars. And she had said the location where the garage would go. And if I, I would be opposed to it, if, or if I would fight it. And I said, you know, absolutely not. A, a small two-car garage in that area for classic cars is more than suitable for, for the land structure. However, the, the structure that's there now is, is far from humble. And, and I don't think you can really put to words the size of, of that garage. And, and again, I'm just speaking my own opinion. And again, I do want to reiterate, we absolutely 100% did not receive any information by mail, phone.
Again, once again, you're here tonight, so I don't know-
I think you're talking on the original building, which was given by a legal permit. They would not have gotten notification. They only get notification because it's 15-inch off. As far as, yeah, so he confused.
So, no, well, prior to the construction of, of, of my house, several neighbors walked up to me and said they received notification in the mail.
I can't speak, sir.
Let me just finish, let me just finish because I'm not really sure how all this works, but I just want to articulate where I'm coming from so you understand. Prior to the construction, they approached me and said there would be some type of meeting for them to review how the, how the addition would look and if they would be for it or against it. This was prior to us doing anything. And I just assumed-
I don't know what authority would make that appear.
Law structure.
No reason for any public input into a legally, into a building that meets all the criteria of the town bylaws. So if it had been 15 inches further back into the lot, we wouldn't be here tonight.
And I appreciate that and I respect that. And we're not even here about that. We're here about the height. I haven't heard the height mentioned once by anybody at any time, how high up this goes.
Yeah.
But again, thank you for listening to me. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Tell us the height, please.
I, Dan O'Doyle from Downcape Engineering, I don't have the exact height, but it was absolutely underneath the limit and, you know, received a building permit from the building department. But I don't have that information here.
So it is less than the 35 feet?
It is. It looks higher because of the elevation.
Yeah, from the grade. Okay. So is there anybody else in the, the audience that wanted to speak? Was there anybody else in the, on the internet audience that wanted to speak? Okay, so let's then go to closing it to public input on the petition, board discussion. We all can disagree. If you gentlemen think it's a variance, I'll go along with the variance. So it doesn't matter to me. I think they meet the criteria of both. Mr. Igo?
Well, in terms of what we're going to grant the relief for, I, I believe it's a variance. It's a brand-new building. It's not accessory to a previously existing, a legally pre-existing non-conforming structure. If it was attached to that and they went over, I'd say maybe I could go along with that. This is a brand-new building, sitting back all alone on a corner of the lot and it's creating a brand-new non-conformity all by itself, nothing in relation to the principal structure. So I think it's a variance. I think they can meet the criterion, criteria of a variance, as I said before. This is an honest mistake. They got a, a legally issued building permit for the size of the structure, for the height of the structure. That was all vetted before they ever came here. They're here because they built it a foot too close to the street. We've had many of these come before us. Again, they're honest mistakes. That's why they have the Board of Appeals. The alternative would be for us to tell them to move it back, which would be a substantial hardship and unreasonable for them to, unless it was just so unreasonable that it was too close to the street, then we might be talking, but we're not. It's diminimus. So in my opinion, I think we should allow it. I think we should vote in favor of it. And again, I think they meet the criteria for the variance. And I think that is the best form of relief to give them tonight. Thank you.
I think the structure's too big personally. And I agree with the, the neighbors that are, that are a little bit concerned about it. And I can understand it's exacerbated by the elevation of the, of the lot. But I don't think if it were in compliance, the neighbors would be any happier either. And I, I think it is, as, as counsel says, diminimus from the standpoint that it, it wouldn't have made a difference. I think it's unfortunate that it, it, in the petitioner's view, it needed to be so large, but there is no restriction in that. As long as it has two bays or three bays, it's, it's allowed under the bylaw. I guess the, the max they could do without additional permission from us would be two cars since they have a garage already. So, and it does meet that compliance. So I, I, I don't, I don't like the structure. I think it's out of place, but I guess that's a matter of taste rather than, rather than the bylaws of the town. And I think it's, we should be giving the, the relief and I would-
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I would, I would lean probably towards the variance as well.
Okay, I think I've been persuaded after I listened to Mr. Igo's very thoughtful and knowledgeable argument. I would-
He has a lot of experience too, so.
Well, he does have a lot of experience.
Been around a long time too. What longer than any of us?
It's his favorite argument for special permits versus variance too, I think to some extent. And I agree, I think it is a variance. It, it is a huge garage, if you ask me, not just in, in size for two cars, but also height, because it looks like the inside of the first floor is really large. So I, I guess I'm, I'm supportive of the problem. It sounds like an honest mistake, but at the same time, I do think there's some conditions that I'd like to see added to it. Now, I think you can do that with a variance. And certainly I, the, the conditions I feel are appropriate is one, it's not used for resident, for, for living space on the second floor.
Second floor.
Second floor living space.
No second floor habitable space.
Yes, I think that's important. It's big enough to be a house, so I wouldn't want it to even start going that direction. And the second thing is it's also raised up so high. And I think because we can put some things, I'd just like to put something in about buffer. The, I don't know, I think the north side of the house has got a slope now, like, like it was raised up. Is that the, if I'm looking at the garage, the right side of the garage, certainly that side, it looks even bigger as you come down the street and it sits up a bit. And if there was some shrubbery along that line at minimum, I think it's a fair thing to request now. They talked about doing some, some, some plantings anyway. So if we could put that as a condition, I think it would be appropriate.
So shrubbery along the right side of the garage?
Yes.
Well, look, there's four sides to the garage. Let's be specific, the north side?
North, yes, I believe.
You want it along the garage or do you want it more towards the street?
Well, I was thinking along the driveway in the garage, because that's the part that's raised is, I think that part's been raised up.
Do you need two sides with shrubbery?
I'm asking for that one, just along the north side of the, of the driveway and the, well, setback, obviously you wouldn't put it out to the street.
Yeah, we, we got to be careful with the driveway because we need some visibility as well, so.
So you want to make sure it's back far enough, but-
Are you saying on the line, on the common line with the northerly of butter or-
Yes.
Against the building?
Now, just the northerly of butter, something that breaks up the visual.
Okay.
That's, those are the two things I would ask for.
Okay, so I look at the plan and, and you know, it's funny, if, if this could not have fit and you needed some little bit of relief because it's, because of Captain Baker Road, so you came in here before construction and said, may we get relief? This board would all be in agreement with it. It's a corner lot, the road is not built, nor will it likely ever be built out to its, to its layout. And, you know, it's high. And I say, okay, there are houses near my house that are a brand-new construction. I don't necessarily like the design, but we accept it because it's the person's right to build whatever they can legally build on property. This was knowing, why would anybody intend to do this? Certainly not. And, but it is a lesson to the wise that you might want to think about having any construction staked before proceeding with the construction. And you don't have to come before us or hire lawyers. So I'm, I'm in favor and I'm absolutely persuaded with a very thoughtful discussion of Mr. Frapri, Mr. Neets and Mr. Igo, that it should be a variance. But we will obviously need to withdraw the special permit following the vote on this if we vote in favors. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the variance as requested with the conditions so stated, that there'll be no habitable space on the second floor.
Not to preclude his model trains?
Well, that's not habitable, yeah. He can put his model trains up there, yeah.
He didn't say toy villages. He said beds, I think.
In terms of plumbing, there's no plumbing running into that right now, is there?
Well, it's a sink in the garage.
Well, you, it's sink. How will you get, how did you get the, how did you get the plumbing out there? How'd you get the water out there?
There is no water.
Not yet.
You have a sink?
No, we want that.
They want it.
Oh, I see, I see. I don't have a problem with the first floor sink. I mean, if they're out there working on cars, you got to wash your hands, that's okay. And I, in terms of the shrubbery, we will limit the plumbing to the wash basin in the And the shrubbery, as Mr. Frapri said, along that northerly side, I think he and counsel worked that out. So those would be the conditions.
Did you hear the third condition?
It is along that northerly common boundary with the other neighbor or some-
No, I'm sorry, I thought it was, maybe my numbering was wrong, the sink.
The sink. You want to limit the plumbing to the first floor for a sink?
Just the wash basin is allowed for plumbing, yeah.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? All those in favor of the motion made with the stated conditions and seconded, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Carries four to zero. We have a special permit request that needs to be withdrawn. Are you asking that to be withdrawn?
I am.
So moved without prejudice.
Does the board care to have any discussion on the motion made and seconded? Not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. It forepasses that the special permit request is withdrawn without prejudice. It therefore passes that the, uh, special permit request is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no, I have mine right here with my name.
I must have Steve's book. Steve, is that your book? Is your book?
Yeah. Or you want it?
No, I've all of a sudden I got two books in front of me. Is that a newer one than mine?
Today's date is twenty-seven.
Yeah, this one's October.
October. I didn't get one.
All right, the third matter on our agenda tonight is that of Christopher O'Connell and Mark O'Connell. Trustees of the Ten Braddock Street Realty Trust. The property location is Ten Braddock Street, interestingly, and that's in South Yarmouth. In a zoning district R twenty-five. The applicant seeks a special permit under zoning bylaw one oh four point three point two, sub paragraph two, and for use under two oh two point five A one to establish the lot as buildable or permitted to be improved with a single family residence. Good evening, Mr. Todd.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Paul Tardif, an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and I do represent the petitioners, Chris and Mark O'Connell Brothers, uh, trustees of the Ten Braddock Street Realty Trust. Um, the property we're talking about is in the R twenty-five zoning district, contains approximately forty-eight hundred square feet, uh, with fifty feet of frontage on Braddock Street. The lot was created by a plan, uh, from December of nineteen forty-five. I think we've seen that plan before. Um, the property is denoted as Lot One Forty-seven on that plan. Presently, the property is improved with two dilapidated sheds. However, the town of Yarmouth, um, archived documents for this property assigned, um, demonstrate that there have been in the past a dwelling unit as well as other structures and facilities on the property. In your application packets, you'll find a letter dated October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one from my office to the Yarmouth Building Commissioner, Mr. Grills, explaining why I believe that we would need to secure a special permit from this board in order to construct any single family home. Uh, I also included in your packets, uh, his emailed response in which he agrees that a special permit in accordance with section one oh four point three point two-two is the proper approach. Um, the fact that this case, uh, the facts of this case follow closely with recent decisions of this board for properties at forty-three Webster Road, twelve Town Brook Road and nine dash eleven Woodbine Avenue, uh, where this board has issued a special permit for the construction of a single family dwelling on those lots. Uh, in each case, some kind of structural improvement had been made on the lot, which created, uh, their pre-existing non-conforming status and uh, had each retained its grandfathering status as a buildable lot. Uh, this is no different. Um, under one oh four point three point two, the board can issue a special permit if it finds that, um, well, in this case, we're, we're looking for a special permit just to allow for the construction of some structure. Uh, we have no plans at this point to build anything. Um, but, uh, a new residential dwelling, uh, in a residential zoning district will benefit the neighborhood. I did talk to my client this morning um, and asked him the question, what do you think you can build here? Um, and I did the math on a lot that is fifty feet wide by ninety-seven feet deep. And when you take out all of these zoning setbacks, um, you're left with, and the twenty-five percent coverage, you're look, you're looking at a footprint of, uh, nine hundred and forty square feet. Um, he also indicated that he intends, if he's going to build something, it's going to be something that is completely in keeping with the neighbors' uh, houses on either side of him. They're not looking for the Taj Mahal or a tower. Uh, he's not going to go to thirty-five feet, uh, although he could. Um, but that is something that he wants to do. So he, there, there's not much of a house that could be built on here, but something can be built on here. A new Title V septic system's going to be installed. That's a benefit. And again, the use is, um, permitted with the zoning, within the zoning district. All structures will comply with all bulk requirements with regard to setbacks, height, lot coverage, et cetera. Uh, if it can't meet any of those requirements, we'll be back here, uh, looking for relief from this board. Uh, so I don't believe it's detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't think it's substantially more detrimental. I think it's substantially detrimental to leave that lot in its present condition uh, with what is there currently. So, uh, for those reasons, we're hoping that a special permit can be issued, uh, without plans, because we've done that before, uh, for this lot. And, um, I hope I can answer questions for you.
Neets, thank you. Any questions?
No, I, I understand the rationale and I understand and, and remember that there was a house there. Um, so I don't have any issue with that. Um, I, I, once again, I think it probably is in the floodplain, so you're going to see significant change to the appearance of this, of the house in the neighborhood where other ones are not compliant with the floodplain. Uh, so that's a concern, but certainly not an inhibiting one. And, um, at this point, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Igo, please.
I have no other questions. I'm familiar with the argument and it has been advanced, uh, at other times before this board. And there was a, uh, a structure previously on that, so it, it does, uh, provide for the grandfather protection. Uh, no, nothing. Um, and again, once they seek a building permit, then if there's issues, they're going to have to comply with the setbacks. If not, they'll have to come back here, but.
Correct.
They're really just looking for, uh, confirmation that it is a buildable lot tonight.
Correct.
Okay. I, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And Mr. Frapri, please.
I'll be honest, I walked through it and I know one of the things that you mentioned before was we approved a lot, but it had a foundation already in place on the, and I, I went back and I looked at the field cards going back on the assessors and they all say vacant lot as far back as I could go. So I'm not sure which ones you're referring to.
Sure. Um, included in your packet is.
I don't know that it really matters. Because it's, it's been used and it's had violations against it for trash and things like that.
Cars.
And the, the, the shacks that are on there today and there's a car that still exists. It was supposed to be taken off several years ago and removed. So it's, uh, it hasn't been well-used, let's put it that way, for a long time. And, um, if it's, if it was to approve a, a house that's similar in size to the others, I, I think it's a reasonable thing to ask, but everything I found is it was vacant, so.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at a, a field card and this was sent to the building commissioner as well and, um, this shows the structure. Um, it even has the, um, the current, um, assessor's map and lot number written right on the top of it.
The structure, that, that was actually one of the sheds, I think, is what it was.
Well.
So.
The second page, it has, um, a lot of detail about, it says cottage and it's even circled.
Okay.
So.
I don't need to take you through all the details that I went through, but.
There was an application for, for a rental permit too, wasn't there in the packet?
Uh, there may have been one or two in there. Yeah, I think there was.
The number was changed over time. It was originally listed at six and it became ten. It moved to ten. It was ending in two thousand nine or something.
Correct.
Well, it was a change. Um, and there was violation back in fifteen or something like that. They agreed to clean it up. There were two cars and a few other things.
I think that was a relative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it, it's just been, it's been used as a storage or dumping site, it seems like, over time, so. So I guess, you know, it'd be nice to have it cleaned up.
Right.
For the area, but, uh.
I agree.
I think it was a vacant lot for a long time, if not at all.
You know, in the past, uh, I, I've always tried to be cautious when Mr. Todd presents something because he's, uh, very good at reminding us of our past, of our past work. And I noticed that there are like four or five decisions in here with almost the same constituted board, except for Mr. Frapri, all, uh, giving relief for these very issues. But I got to tell you something. If I'm a neighbor, I don't want to look at a vacant lot that has crap all over it because nobody wants to take and police it. The owners don't want to police it. And they, neighbors then have to look at where somebody decided to use it as a dumping ground. So I, I hear Mr. Frapri loud and clear. I mean, I don't think we can dictate to you what, what can go on this. I think whatever's buildable is what's buildable, if it's a buildable lot. And, you know, you're constrained by setbacks and you're constrained by the lot size and so, so be it. But, um, I mean, I think the relief is appropriate. I just hope that the owners now, uh, will, uh, take some action to utilize the lot. And if not, to at least keep it clean. Respect their neighbors. So, does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this, uh, request? If so, please come to the microphone. Let us hear you. Does anyone care to speak in opposition to this petition? Please, if you are interested in doing so, come to this microphone and let us hear you. Please come right up. Yeah. No, no, right over there at the lectern, if you would, sir. And when you, before you start telling us what you'd like to tell us, if you'd tell us your name and your, your address, please.
Uh, my name's Dan Madden and I am a, I own the property to the left of that, if you're looking at the lot, um, number twelve Braddock. We've been there since two thousand and three and we never saw a structure on there. We saw, we saw a shed show up one day. We don't know where that came from and we've seen, uh, temporary electricity on a pole one day showed up. We don't know where that came from, you know, things like that, but, uh, and I echo everything you, you gentlemen said earlier. You know, we, we lived through it for twenty years, looking at all the trash and that site and the, the cars, some registered, some not registered, who knows, you know, but I will commend the, uh, the boys who, you know, um, after Walter passed away, they, they did clean up the lot and, and we appreciated that. But, uh, I, again, I, I think, uh, as a neighbor, if, if you can put a structure there that is similar to the houses in the neighborhood, I'm perfectly fine with that. That'll, you know, that only enhance the value of our properties, but I do not want to see a two-story structure built there or anything that's, that doesn't fit in with that neighborhood. Here's the neighbor on the other side.
Are you done? Are you done with your comments?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please. Tell us your name, where you live.
Uh, Michael Moriarty and, uh, I'm a neighbor at Four Braddock Street.
Hey, Michael.
And good evening. Hi. Hey, I'd just like to say that everything I heard tonight about this particular issue is fine. I'm, I appreciate the boards, uh, you know, listening to what's been said and the attorney spoke well of what he intended. And if I hear it correctly, Mr. Madden spoke and said if, as long as we see a home that's a similar size and venue to the ones that are immediately abutting this property on both sides, that certainly would raise no objection. That'd be welcome, as, as you pointed out, sir, that, uh, who wants to see a vacant lot? I bought this home several years ago that I'm in now on Four Braddock Street. And, uh, I bought it in spite of the vacant lot because it was a nice piece of property. It was a good location. Um, basically, I wouldn't have any objection to it being built upon as long as it's not a mammoth house.
Well, I, you know, let's, let us not, uh, uh, misinform or have you misconstrue. We are not able to dictate the size of the home, whatever is allowed by the, by the building commissioner.
Oh, I, I thought perhaps you could. I thought perhaps you could say as long as the home being requested is similar to the houses in the, in the area, the abutts. You know, if, if they petition to build a big, huge house, I would hope the other boards would take care of that, but I can't guarantee it, obviously. It's a very small lot.
Yes, yeah. And I think that's going to dictate it being a small home.
So.
Yeah, it will.
I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Bye-bye.
I, I think we can put on a condition that the, the owners not allow junk to be stored on that lot, because I think it's offensive that neighbors have to look at a junkyard.
I, I think that's already, uh, subject to an enforcement action by the, the building commissioner. He's, would enforce that. You can't leave that around, so.
If, if it makes you feel any better, um, you know, these gentlemen, um, who now own the property, reached out to me to inquire about this because they want that to happen. They want it cleaned up. So that's, you know, it's not someone that's sitting on their hands if they got me this far, so.
Okay, anybody prepared to make a motion? Oh, is there anybody at home interested in this? I oppose. All right, is anybody prepared to make a motion on the?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the special permit as requested. There are no conditions. I mean, the, the conditions suggested by, um, the abutters are appreciated, but I think they're beyond the purview of this board. Um, again, if there's trash in the lot, if you call the, uh, building commissioner's office, which I'm sure he's not thrilled that I'm telling you to do that.
I'm sure a lot of people call him all the time anyway, but that, that's who you direct that to if there's any notices that have to go out.
And in terms of, uh, you know, the size and, and what, we really don't have the authority to say. It's whatever they are legally able to do. Um, and it is a small lot, as you said, so what, what they're going to be able to do is going to be limited. Uh, but again, it would be with no conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Board care to have any discussion before moving along to a vote?
Only that I think counsel has pointed out correctly that this lot, um, has the benefit of grandfather protections as a result of a previous structure, it being previously improved in the past. And the case law does support that.
Yeah, I, I also think that this is such a tight neighborhood of small lots that it certainly isn't going to increase any congestion, uh.
No.
It's going to be a modest town, no matter what goes there.
Yeah.
But what I do think is that it's going to enhance, as we've heard, the neighbors' property, particularly if it's built in a fashion that, you know, might be in keeping with the neighborhood. You don't want anything to stick out like a sore thumb.
I would agree, and I think it's going to really improve the neighborhood in that regard.
Yeah.
So in that regard, I mean, it makes, it makes perfect sense to approve it and have it developed, but I would encourage any neighbors who are concerned to watch what's going on or ask, ask, to check with the building department if they're going to build, if you want to know what's going to be going up, so that that's the way you're going to find out. Is just stay in touch, so.
All right, so, uh, is any, uh, on that motion, uh, so made and seconded, uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries unanimously. Uh, we'll look forward to a draft decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And now we have minutes. I'm sure everybody's read the minutes before.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion made to approve the minutes as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those carry unanimously.
Can I abstain since I wasn't present?
You can't pass the minutes if you didn't. You want to read them?
I read them, but I can't tell you that they're true and accurate because I didn't, I wasn't, I mean it.
Oh, you want to run any of them? Well, I think that we can do it anyway with the three people that were on it here, so. We're done.
We're done. All right.
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Please, so adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.